You guys are good?
Yes.
We're gonna call to order the meeting on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is now five thirty-four. May I have a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenburg?
Yeah.
Mrs. Jones?
Ms. Jones will be with us briefly. She is running late.
Ms. King?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Ryan?
Here.
Okay, we will go ahead. Oh, do we do the presentation?
No, we don't do this.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead to our discussion items, item two point one, our attendance campaign. Dr. Reed, I will turn it over to you.
All right, well, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our work session. Uh, we're gonna be talking about two topics this evening. Uh, first one is about, um, attendance, and we're talking about our attendance matters be present campaign. Uh, this evening, uh, we have several folks that will be sharing, uh, this information, and that will be our assistant superintendent, Melissa Thompson, um, our coordinator of our student services, Dawn Immler, and one of our youth development specialists this evening, uh, Jack Ryan, uh, is, uh, who's also a brush, proud brush graduate, so we're really happy, uh, to have him here this evening. Uh, you know, coming back and still doing the good work of our district. Um, one of the things I want you to keep in mind as we go through this, um, although you're seeing, uh, some, um, central office and some other, uh, district, uh, level leadership presenting this this evening, it's, it's really everybody, uh, one of our core beliefs, it takes, you know, again, you know, it takes, uh, uh, the family and the community and, and our teachers and our administrators all to be present too, uh, to make sure that, that our students are present, so I just wanna keep in mind that it was a campaign. This is a very inclusive campaign, uh, but being presented this evening by some great folks here, so I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Melissa Thompson, and we are gonna be, um, we're gonna be shifting cameras for a little bit here, so just, uh, stay tuned.
So, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Reed. Um, good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about what's happening in student services and the projects and the supports, um, that we are providing. Um, I'm leading to first share that, uh, what you're going to see here is, um, modeled after the tiers of support that we follow in the district, and so I wanted to, to share at least, um, this handout with you, um, with regard to how we are organizing our work in student services, um, just as a framework to give you an idea. Um, tonight, we are speaking specifically about attendance. It is a working document for us, um, and so it's... So it is a working document, uh, for us, as with most of the documents that we do when we're working with students. As things evolve, as we get more information, we will update this. Um, but some of the information that, uh, Ms. Immler and Mr. Ryan have prepared for you this evening is also in line with the resource binder and information that we shared with our building principals this year, our school counselors, our school social workers, so that everyone is, what we would say, rowing in the same direction, moving in the same direction as we are responding to our tiers of intervention. Um, so certainly, Ms. Immler, Mr. Ryan are fully prepared to share this, um, information, so I'm going to step aside and let them do what they do, um, and I think you'll be very pleased and impressed by the work that they've put into, um, sharing this information with you. My, my acknowledgement and disclaimer is this, um, we have the, um, the template that we use is aligned to my model here, but it's not in my blue, but it's not reflecting our standard district template, so that's my fault, so please do not hold that against them. That was in alignment to the blue, 'cause it was kinda cool, then I'm like, oh, my goodness. So, that's my fault, not theirs, so please do not hold them, that against them, okay? That's all me, so.
I do see the, I do see the logo on top.
Yeah, it's, it's there, it's totally there, so, listen.
I'm gonna own this, though, this was me. Um, so, attendance matters. Um, attendance is affecting every district, it's not just unique to SEO. And, um, as you look at those blue, that blue sheet with the tiers on it, um, you'll see that one of the, uh, resources that we have are our youth development specialists, our YDSs. We meet with them weekly, we discuss, um, current trends that we're seeing, uh, the work that at hand, and when we were meeting, and the reason I mention this, when we were meeting, be present campaign, this came from one of the YDSs, we're trying to figure out how do we coinage, how can we come up with something simplistic, and just be present. I mean, think about us in our daily lives, we have communication, things that distract us. You might be sitting somewhere, but not be cognizant of what's going on because of the distractions at home or things that are going on. So, this came from Mr. Winters, actually, so I love the fact it's be present, and when you have individuals who are part of that process in creating crafting and own it, um, it looks different, right? It looks, it's, it's an investment fund, you know, as well. So, good attendance means missing less than ten days within a school year. Um, as a kid growing up, my parents kicked me out the door, pushed us out the door, "You're going with your green, purple, blue, don't call me, you're there." We live in a day now with COVID and things of that nature, but it doesn't happen. And there are also barriers that are different from the day that I grew up and the day that our children are growing up.
Thank you for saying that.
So when you look at how ten days can affect, you know, if they are missing less than ten days, how it affects their, uh, or increased reading scores, how it affects their increase in math scores, and then that getting them across the stage, because that is the end goal, how do we support them to navigate society? The data that you're gonna see in this, and this is, uh, brief, comes from Attendance Works. It's a resource that is used by the First Ring Consortium, it's also used by ODE, so these aren't facts that we just kind of crafted, but we actually pulled it from a resource. And I know we're having some technical concerns, but, um, I actually had the, the, uh, website available for you, so you could access it, it's very user-friendly. So, post for pre-COVID, more than eight million students nationwide were missing so many days that it was affecting them academically. Since COVID has impacted us, it's doubled. So sixteen million students are impacted by not going to school, and that's excused or unexcused. Um, that's through suspension, and how does that affect? When we think about those different targets or those different benchmarks we use with the third grade reading guarantee, how it impacts their ability to be a reader, achieving in middle school, and then again, I'm getting to that endpoint, you know, how do we craft that graduate to navigate society? So, according to Attendance Works, September is the month, okay? Um, students who miss fewer than two days in September continue, on average, to miss two or less each month. And think about that, in a school year comprised of eight months, that's sixteen days, that's huge, that's huge. But if we can address this early, if we can intervene early, then we have a greater success with our students. Students who miss two to four days in September were five times more likely to miss, um, fewer days with chronic attendance. And something I want you to understand, while I was utilizing that ten days, ten days of absence equates to a year worth of academic growth, so think about that. Like, ten days equates to a year of academic growth. So, as we're gonna share some data, Mr. Ryan's gonna share with you, I want you to get a sense of where we are on September the thirteenth. So there's a pyramid for everything. When I was growing up, we had the food pyramid, I mean, everything can be put into a pyramid, it can be tiered. And so with Attendance Works, they have their foundational part of the pyramid, talks about the whole school and what the support is provided for the whole school. Then we get into that tier one, uh, intervention, universal prevention, tier two, early intervention, and then tier three, intensive intervention. So, when you look at that foundational piece, we're gonna talk about what practices they talk about and then the strategies that we, as a district, are gonna implement. So, that foundational piece that we offer everyone, what do we do as a whole school to create that strong school community? And so I thought it was important, coming from student services, to highlight that conscious discipline that you've heard, you've talked about, and how that program is implemented, K through twelve. In conscious discipline, they're trying to create, or we're trying to create, that school community, that school family, whether it's through how we greet students when they come in the door, whether that's through our morning meetings, when we do our check-ins, whether it's through our wishing wells, and I think more importantly, the welcome back. It's important that when students miss, we let them know that it was, you know, how were you? How, how are you? Um, where, you know, not so much where were you, but that you were missed. Who doesn't wanna be missed?
Right.
Like, I mean, even as adults, if you come into your occupation, your job, and someone says, you know, "Jones, are you okay? You were, we missed you yesterday." Like, that's important, that is important, rather than just to keep on moving. How often do you walk through a hallway and someone say, you know, "How are you doing?", but never wait for your response, right? So, we've embedded that within conscious discipline, when we start our meetings and when we do that with our students in the mornings. So here's that tier one, you know, encouraging better attendance for all students and preventing absenteeism, that's what our end goal is, and so what we're going to do tier one, this is that, uh, strategies put into, I mean, practices put into strategies, is that we're going to do two events or two celebrations throughout the year. Right now, we're looking at the beginning of October, November at the latest, but the beginning of October, and then in the spring, in March, in April, and we're looking at doing school-wide events and catering it to the students that we service. Uh, appropriateness for our K three, appropriates for that four, five, six, seven, eight, and then nine through twelve. Bringing Archie out to K to three is gonna be much more appropriate and effective than if I bring Archie, no offense to the high schools, they're, they're gonna have fun at that person's expense. But, but there is a need to meet them where they are and let them know that, you know, we can develop this in a way that they understand what we value, because just as parents, you know, our stu-, our, our children, if they mimic you, they'll tell you what they know is important to you. Same thing with at school, right? Attendance matters, being present matters, and when you're not there, what does that look like? So, when it comes to tier two, again, this is where we go to that next level, students are at a greater risk for chronic absenteeism, and this is ten percent of the school year. So, a hundred and eighty days, ten percent, that's eighteen days. I still keep getting into these teens, like sixteen, eighteen, and, and that's just, uh, I value us being here, and I know that our teachers value us being here, and students and families. Eighteen days is huge. So what does that look like from that tier two perspective? And this is where, um, we are beginning right now in September to utilize our YDSs, our social workers, our school counselors, but I wanna go back to what Dr. Reed said initially. It is the work of everyone, everyone has an investment in this. It doesn't just rely solely on student services, it's everyone's responsibility. But from the student services standpoint, this is how we're trying to contribute, this is how we're trying to go at supporting the work, and that's the work of all. So, um, on Fridays, the district runs a report at noon that looks at all of the attendance, and that information is sent to myself and Mr. Ryan. That is our date material for the weekend to look over and to process and look at, so that when we come together on Mondays, because we meet every Monday, um, we talk about what that looks like, and then we create what will happen then when we meet with YDSs on Tuesday. So every Friday, we get the report, we process the data, we look at it. On Monday, we meet with Fidelity, with Mr. Ryan and myself and Ms. Thompson to look at that data, and then we meet on Tuesday with the YDSs to talk about how that will look. And so, um, when we get into this portion of, of the tier three, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ryan to, to share with you, you know, what that looks like, how we process that data, and how we move forward with our students.
So, again, once we reach a tier three point, this is, students missed an egregious amount of school, uh, later in the school year, later in the school year, it could be as much as thirty-six days of school, uh, but they're missing twenty percent of school. Um, looking at last year's data, we had two hundred students that fit that criteria by the end of the school year, uh, and that first tier two, uh, we had almost a thousand students. So, it is a very big issue that we're facing, and it requires a team effort. Uh, again, Dawn said we need to do a little work together as a whole team, uh, to combat this.
Can you share with them what data you pulled from Friday's report?
Uh, yes, so, and then, um, we're already receiving, receiving data for this year, so based on Friday's report, uh, obviously, I'm not expecting a bunch of kids to be missing thirty days, considering we've only had seventeen.
Mr. Ryan, hold on one second. Sheryl, can you hear him?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Actually, I made sure.
So, uh, our cutoff right now is six days, so, uh, just going off the data I received Friday, we had a hundred and twenty-one kids, uh, that had already missed at least six days of school uh, in the month of September, we're only halfway through the month. So, it is, uh, going to be, uh, a large group that we're gonna face, so we're trying to get this program rolled out as quickly as we can.
So a hundred and twenty-one students have already missed six days, we said that ten was our cut. So they only have a four-day leadway now to hit that ten-day mark. And of those a hundred and twenty-one students, we looked at how, um, what was our largest population?
Yes, I was just gonna ask that question. I know he's a data guru. Yes.
So I did break it down, uh, by which schools they're at. We had sixty-nine students that were at Garrett Brush, uh, I believe it was seventeen at Memorial, eighteen at Grandview, uh, the largest elementary that had them was, there were eleven at Roland, and there were only two at Sunview and two at Adrian.
You said eighteen at Greenview, Jack?
I believe so.
Okay.
I can check the data later and give you an accurate.
No, that actually, that estimate is actually really good, that, that number is fine.
So, okay.
Uh, once they do hit this tier three, we do, uh, set up an attendance plan with them, so that is the sheet I was... So, uh, we prefer to have these meetings, uh, to work out the attendance plan with the parent involved, especially if they're at a younger age, uh, if they are in high school. Uh, we occasionally just have it with the high school senior or student, uh, just to decide pretty much what is the barriers that they face to getting to school? Is it transportation? Is it, "I don't feel connected to an adult in the building"? Is it, "I don't see why this is important to me"? And then we connect, use this plan to plan out which resources we need to use to interact with that kid so that we can, uh, increase that odds that they may get through school.
So I have a question. So this is more so, looking at this, you know, normally, we've had, you know, the past, parents have always been scared when it comes to attendance, and if their student misses a certain amount of days, that they, you know, they're in risk of failing, or, you know, they won't graduate or something like that, and when, um, it's approached, it's either approached, um, when you hear from the school, it actually is not, it's not a enlightening factor. It's more so, "Hey, your child has missed thirty days of school, what's going on"? So basically, you're telling me that we are going in-depth with these parents and these students to see where we can offer them better or more assistance to assure that they're coming to school?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
And if I may, um, I wanted to go on this point. Um, one of the things that, um, everyone is aware that we have youth development specialists that are in our buildings, however, they are also K twelve, so while they have a specific building assignment, when you think about the volume of cases that are going to be at Brush, our largest building, that is one of the reasons why we have them as a K twelve, so that they are able to hold cases at other buildings to be able to address these issues. And sometimes, um, you know, when you're dealing with younger students and what, um, Mr. Ryan would see last year and even going into this year in our work with, um, truancy mediation, um, that focuses, truancy mediation is gonna focus on that younger student, because at that point, we're looking at it likely being a parent issue. Um, the student is not driving, you know, themselves to school or waking up, um, necessarily on their own. So we're looking at what is that we need to do to provide those supports to the parent. The older the student is, the more directed it is with that young person. So that's why all hands are on deck when they are, um, starting their school day at their assigned building and then perhaps coming over here or other places in the district. That's what's happening, that volume of case. So when you've got sixty-nine cases in a short amount of time, we're divvying up, um, on that Tuesday morning to determine how best and how to strategize, how to provide that support and that assistance. So I just wanted to share that, because sometimes the question is, okay, so what does that look like? And, and that's what we do. So the face sheet is shared so that they have the information, um, they're able to, um, have a contact information for the student, of course, go into the attendance record and those kinds of things. That's what happens in those Tuesday mornings, in addition to other case review, so sorry.
Let me ask you real quick, when you talk about mediation, I mean, who could technically be involved, uh, in, in a mediation? Uh, families, principal, parent, YDSs, I mean, um, for those folks that are not familiar with how attendance mediation? Can you describe attendance mediation generally, what you've done?
Yeah, so I've done three or four attendance mediations last year, um, somewhere up here at the, or up at the board. Uh, that one was me and Malika, uh, meeting with the parents of one of my Roland students and discussing, "Why is so-and-so missing so much school"? I've also had meetings up here at the high school with high school's, uh, seniors and their parents, sometimes just the seniors themselves, uh, and those ones I like to get Eddie Hall, the career connections, uh, specialist involved, so that he can help with getting them to realize what happens afterwards, why are we coming to school in the first place, so.
Good, thank you.
And if I could just kind of chime in even on that piece of it, um, with those, those mediations, um, with, with our, our families. Number one, often, they don't even realize that number, you know, really. Like, when you sit down and you say, "Well, they missed, like, seven or eight days", and they're like, "No way!", and we're like, "Yeah, we!", you know, and, and having those conversations and really digging into what those barriers are and how do we disrupt those barriers to ensure that we give our, our students to school, um, is very important. And also within that, uh, that mediation, you know, kudos, quite honestly. Um, last year, I was involved with the K three mediations with the juvenile court. We really didn't get to that point, because our three YDSs in the elementary school, we're doing such a wonderful job in their due diligence and meeting with families and trying to, um, determine what those barriers are. We often didn't get to that point because they changed the behavior. As Ms. Thompson said, with our, our younger ones, it's really not a kid issue, it's a parent issue. And so how do we then navigate and help support our parents so that we can ensure that our little ones are, uh, in their, in their classrooms? So, again, just wanna give that shout-out, because that, that was real and that happened in real time, as Mr. Ryan.
I'm glad you made that reference, because what I really hope families can understand and be appreciative of is without mechanisms like this in place, they are taking time of work, out of work, going down to juvenile court. We are getting, um, declarations of unruly, we are getting criminal charges because you are not allowing your child to be educated. So I hope that they can appreciate that, that's on one hand. And on the second hand, the totality of the job of the YDSs, mm-mm, they're not teachers. Teachers can't do the job that the YDS is doing. I need teachers to focus on teaching, and I need teachers to focus on the fact that the YDS is giving them the support that they need so they have their seats filled. I know sometimes we run into the convolutedness of why do we need YDSs? We need YDSs the same reason why we need math, social studies, science, and teachers. So I hope all of those components can appreciate the intervention that is happening to eliminate that juvenile court criminal component and empty classroom component.
So this, kind of, we put a bow on this to wrap this up, but we wanted you to know that we have, um, an, a, a, a hands-on-deck approach that we're coming at it from multiple facets. If you hear something about the be present campaign, because I know that I'm watching the news every morning, I'm that Channel Three person with the coffee at four-thirty watching, and I'm watching all of these different districts get their in, and I'm thinking, well, we should be in the end. Um, and so, the, being present is important, um, know that we are, um, trying to our very best to support and tackle that, and, and, um, more to come. So when you hear about it, you know, just be aware that, that we'll be coming to a meeting soon too.
I'm excited about it. It's exciting. It is, it actually is.
It's proactive.
Yeah, it is.
Just a question, how is this information relayed then? 'Cause I'm sure stu-, uh, teachers are calling when kids are missing that much school. How does that relate to the teachers?
You know, now coming from a principal's side to the student services side and seeing things, it puts things in greater perspective, because as a building principal, you were solely responsible when you're looking at door building, and now I'm looking at six buildings, and so looking at the secretaries, or the tenant secretaries, looking at the principal themselves, looking at the YDSs, the social workers, the school counselors, like, it is a combined effort, so it's mobilizing those efforts. Like, I believe that we have, many districts, I believe, don't have the resources that we have, and that's boasting, and I'm okay with that.
Hmm.
But how we organize those resources to be effective, right? And, and that's what I think that we're doing through this work. So please know, we're gonna be communicating, I've had some teachers, since we've talked about this, they all send a snippet or a blurb or a blah, or "Have you thought of this?", and I thought, well, that's the whole point, right? How do we create that conversation? How do we open those lines of communications?
So those reports on Fridays too, though, to, uh, Ms. Falkenburg, or, those reports you talk about, where you, you run those attendance report and, and your, your homework for the weekend, you know, through the weekend, so that on Monday, you're both prepared. So that kind in itself, I'd be looking at that data, and as they just said, there's so many at the high school, so many here, then I also, which might wanna do too, to see if that, those, maybe it's from the same family, sometimes, and it's multiple buildings. So I think that's the piece, is looking at that data, what I was hearing, every Friday is gonna also give your, your game plan, right?
But I think your point is about how is it communicated, right? How are they, no, no, and I, and I, I hear you. So we need to look at also, what does that look like, so that everybody is reading from the same page, right? That we all have that same, but I, I do hear you.
And each building can run an attendance report, that's something that can be done.
Yeah.
Um, and I think what is important to that, to, and, and I believe to where you're going with it, is that it is everyone's responsibility.
Yeah.
I mean, we all have a shared responsibility, and so in the wraparound services, um, that are provided, sometimes there are things that are working and we're working through, and our work, the work of student services is intended and designed, and, and Ms. Bassstock is getting ready to take the lead, um, supporting our core instructional program, what's happening. And so we're in this together, and so when we all recognize that we all have a piece of this and we're in it together, um, certainly we can follow up with, and I will, with our building principals, so that if that weekly attendance report, that can be shared, it's not a secret.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but, but I think that when a student is absent, I think Ms. Immler shared it, instead of, "Where have you been?", it is, "I'm so happy to see you, I am so glad that you're back, and let me bring you up to speed, let me bring you up to date with what we've been working on", you know, so that when, because students miss for a variety of reasons, so many different barriers, and some of which, you know, not, it's, it shouldn't be for public consumption, right? But it's about, once they do pass that threshold of our building and those classrooms, uh, welcoming and celebrating the fact that I see you, and I'm glad you're here, and how do I get you caught up, and how do I ensure that you have an incredible day? And so, um, so we're in it together, so thank you for, for that.
Okay.
And I would also expect or think that teachers can actually reach out to the YDSs in their building to say, "Hey, this student has missed, you know, I, I'm, I'm concerned, this student normally is here, and now the student is missing four days, I can't get ahold of mom". Is there a way we can, we can follow up? Am I correct to assume that?
Of course, of course. I mean, and I know that our teachers do that, I know that our teachers also call parents, because what we know is, their call and their outreach to a student is so effective. When they say to that student, "I missed you, and I see you, and what can I do to support you", that is so incredibly powerful, because it's building and strengthening that relationship that that teacher, those, our teachers have with our students and those families. So we're in it together.
Good question. Sure. Um, so this seems like it's focused more on, um, full days of absences. Is there some type of trigger if there are students who are missing multiple half-days or partial days?
So hours, um, counts, and so we do look at that, our building principals are also looking at that data too, um, with regard to what's happening during the course of a school day, so yes.
Okay.
Well, you're absolutely correct, 'cause what you could see is, as a former building principal, uh, so say if a child comes in always an hour late, and they're missing a, a important part of that day as well, and that does add up, correct? Or if you have the secondary level, uh, you know, a student is, is absent, not absent, for whatever reason, from a, a certain class, but attends other classes, well, you, you know, you need to get to the root cause. You know, why is that? They're showing up for school, but they're not going to that class, you know, and that, so I think, uh, absolutely, those are, you know, other, there's a lot, uh, to look at. Great question.
I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
So while we're switching over, I'm gonna move to up to the front here, and then it's our next topic. Get used to this, too. Um, Mr. Cable, I think, is changing over? Okay, so I, I think these are two, kind of, I don't wanna say, they're connected, right? So the next thing we're talking about is the state report card, and a few things. Uh, we, we know that the state report card, I've, I've been around a long time, is only one measurement, and, and typically, it's after the fact, however, we also know it's a very public measurement, and, and that piece. But the reason why it's important with, with, uh, attendance, if you're not present, you're not getting exposure to the content that you need, and that does affect your achievement, that affects your engagement and a lot of different things. So I, you know, I think it's a perfect evening to really talk about, you know, what are we being really deliberate about? It's not that we've never paid attention to attendance, we've always paid attention to it. I think the pandemic, in talking with my other colleagues, superintendents from the, from the First Ring and across the nation, we're seeing, uh, like they said, it's doubling, you know, and it's really building, rebuilding people's stamina, right? You've heard me say this, rebuilding everybody's stamina to do schooling five days a week, not just four days a week, or, or if you have seven classes, not just five days. Or or if you have seven classes, not just five classes, you got to attend all the classes, right? And that piece is, so so here's what we want to want to accomplish today is really, um, they are have re- the Department of Education has revamped the report card. So as the the teacher in me says, you know what? We need to re-educate everybody as what are the new components? And I'm not going to try to get down in the weeds and this evening to talk about the ODE math method. We all know that can be quite confusing here. But I think what we'd like to do is introduce you to, there are actually six components, but really we're going to talk about five. Because if you hear the word six, and why do we only talk about five? Because the sixth one is really not being activated, so to speak. So I think they've gone from to a star method, you're going to see what that is. And I'm going to use the word prelimin- preliminary, if I can say it. Because we have until like, um, there's a window between October eighteenth and October twenty eighth to comb through your data and really look at if there are things that that are, I don't want to mistake for lack of a better word, it happens. And so we have to own that data. So what we're doing right now, especially in two different areas, is looking at our graduation rate and and our early literacy and some other folks. Because Ms. Bassstock and Mama is going to explain some things to you because I hate to say this, but mistakes are made. And we're finding out that the data sometimes, and when you really always have a a population that's a little bit more transient than more district that are stationary, that's when the the hiccups happen. So I just want to let, so that's the piece. But there are some really things that we're excited about. Um, I don't know if we get excited about, but I think our our hard work and the hard work of of teachers and parents and administrative team, both building and district wise, is there's some really good areas that we're really going to celebrate with you this evening. So Ms. Bassstock, I think it's, come on up. I know everyone's going to talk about the report card, but.
All right.
And a few of us will be interjecting some comments.
Yes, as much as they can, right? So we're going to start with the report card. So get your mathematical hats on and all that data. And just know that we are all learning this as we go along, because every time I attend a session, something's different.
And that is the truth. Something just to.
We're rolling as we can. So I think the important thing is that the terminology is changing and vocabulary is important to be speaking the same language with everybody. So the new report card is the star rating, there's five stars, right? And that rating is made up of components, like Dr. Reed said. And those components also are given a star rating. And those components then are made up of measures. And that's all the data parts that we're going to see. Over here, you see that report only piece, that report only pieces just, there's a, there's report only pieces with a lot of the component components you'll see on the new report card. That's kind of like telling you a story. Um, I know the 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 voices were very loud on, hey, the the letter grade or the stars, one thing, but there's a lot going on. So the the report only data kind of helps you tell your story a little bit. So there will be components that just have the measures, and then there will be some that have measures, and then just some report only data. As we come up. All right. So the components. As you can see, we have achievement, progress, graduation, early literacy gap, closing. And the the circle is made up of weights. So the law says that achievement and progress have to count equally. So how that pie is made up, it has to count equally. And then you have your other pieces here, early literacy, graduation, and progress. And then there's the other one that we're talking about is college career readiness. That's not part of this one. It'll be enacted next year.
Okay.
So let's start with one of the components, the big old achievement one. So as you can see, I've been over here reporting only data. So remember last year, all those years before, we'd get the whole met, not met thing? You know, you'd get a score and it would tell you it's met and it's not met. Well, that's only report data now. Okay, so that's only going to show us where we are in picture. The rating, the star, is made up of the performance index only. That is the only thing that counts. We did have a performance index measure on the last report card. It tells you you moved limited to basic, basic, and all that kind of stuff. This is weighted a little differently this year, so. So there are some key points. I kind of pulled out what I thought was like that aha moment for educators, teachers, principals to say, oh, my gosh, that's what's different. Because there's a lot, but these are the key points. ELA and math, including summer ELAs, have taken. Science, fifth and eighth grade, which before wasn't part of our achievement. ELA two, integrated math and one and two, geometry, algebra, biology, American history, American government, and approved substitute AP tests in the International Bachelor, the CCP, your college level classes. Those are all now part of our PI.
And that's a change. There's there's a little bit of a change in there. So that's that's a key point.
Right?
That's a key point.
So the other big point is the second bullet point, right here. So before, PI was given, like you had to score like a hundred, a camera, a hundred eighty or something like that.
OD E math was one twenty or something.
Something like that, you had to hit. Now it's different. Now they're taking the top two highest percentage.
In the state.
The average in the state for a district, right? And that is your measure.
So whatever those top two.
Whatever those top two percent.
And Solan did this, that's the.
And so and then your PIs measured against that. There's good and bad to that.
Okay.
One of those negatives, I mean, is you can drop. Before you couldn't drop PI, now you can drop. Because it all depends on where everybody else going is going. And like Dr. Reed and I talked today, we were going over this and going over data and like, oh, my gosh. And, you know, it's like, you know, again, we're chasing these, you know, we're chasing so many schools. There is a good point that those schools also have to keep up their their bar before they can't just sit here. Because their PI was here, you can't just sit there no more. You you have to move to. So so there's a little bit of balance, but this is a very kind of, this is, this is going to be a tough one.
Yeah. And and one of the one of the discussions, again, when I when I when I mentioned some, I'll just share the discussion and not necessarily, by no means make an excuse, but but an explanation, different things. I think one of the concerns that, um, I was at a meeting with a a group of superintendents. And the concern they have with this year, the twenty one, twenty two, is when you look at two percent, uh, let's think about the last two years. Um, there were, uh, we were in a pandemic and there were some school districts that that had in-person, never was not in-person. And there were other districts actually that spent a year online. And then there's some districts, and we were a mix, we were a mix. And so not not the fact that, by no means an excuse, I mean, we were in a pandemic. It was very difficult to force people to come to school. Uh, there was some really concerns with regards to life or death situations. And so I think this this was one of the the, when you look at that, I don't know, maybe moving forward, things might be a little bit different. But there was a little bit of a concern in the sense of, over the last two years, um, you know, there was a lot of different models and methods of delivery based out of some real life situations in that, so.
No, I'm.
Ms. Joseph.
I'm just trying to digest what you said, like, I I like the fact that the ceiling is brought down according to the highest school.
But.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the dynamics of who goes to those schools now is just going to separate them from here and here.
It's going to be interesting to see how this plays out.
That that actually gets, actually been the discussion in the last few months. So that is, that bullet point I'm mentioning is is a little, I'm using the word controversial. Uh, they're not, it was, there's been a lot of debate on it. Um, they talk about equity and just different things. And so our, this evening, we are presenting the facts and then we, it's all new. And again, as anything, we'll, you look at that, so there has been argument, you're not.
It is, I mean, I'm not going to be funny, but it's going to be brown, cream. I mean, we're just going to be honest, I'm not serious.
Your transient number is.
It's going to be crazy, like, now it's just going to be a shift of the paradigm on shade.
Bell.
It isn't even going to be a bell, it's going to be an inkling.
So it's going to be, it it'll be interesting to see how this plays out, like, it's like, because it's like, I think they're, I think they thought their intent was to kind of level, but then you think about it, I'm like, you know, how does that really work? But what we will see. So, um, again, you will not be, yeah, I might be back in two weeks going, wow, thank you. Right, met, not met, we won't be seeing that anymore. That was the old one, because we're, again, this is just the PI that's counting. And again, the former data, we're still going to be able to see it. And it's important to see where where we are in that measure, but it's not counted. So I I put this up here and let, um, I will tell you, like, all the components have a chart like this. But I thought, oh, my gosh, I'm not putting one for every single one because we'd be forever. But basically, here's your stars, and then it'll give a data point, your percentage, your range. And then it tells you whether or not you significantly exceed or met, right? So every data point, every component will have that, but, you know, repetitiveness, I think you guys can figure that out. We've been here forever. So so this is what, this is how this is measured. So every point will fall into one of these stars, and those stars will have that range. Okay? So here's us. So this is, this is the prelimi- what's that word? Preliminary.
We haven't come through our data yet.
Yeah.
But we're currently.
So Dr. Reed made us two pinky promises in the Darth Vader death grip that we showed this before, you know, we showed you guys. So it was interesting. Um, so this is two stars. So remember, this is your measure, not by the threshold, but measured by the top two, the average of the top two percent. So if you look at, if you look at us, I'm totally used to do that, you know? So we are here, our max value is fifty, so we fell in this range here. Okay? And this is the, what the data looks like. So I'm going to do a real quick explanation, partly because it's complicated and partly because I'm still.
No problem.
There you go. So.
Look at the pie, yeah.
This is our pie, right? This is the, this is the proficiency level. So these are the the categories which we're used to, right? So we have limited and basic, and then proficient, and then we have accomplished and advanced and advanced plus. That's kind of a new little thing, right? I believe that means like if you're accelerated and then you score, you get those extra, those extra kick points. So that's where we are. And then over here is the points by proficiency level. Because what the PI does is is you get points as you progress, moving kids up the ladder. So the more you move up, the more points you get. So this is how this is, the OD E math is calculated. Here's where we are, here's our percent, and then we ended, we ended with a two.
And as you can see too, we're a lot of percentage of limited and basic currently in the district. This is why the last year, year and a half, the push has been for the tier one and the core curriculum. Really diving back into that. And you see our basic numbers and our limited numbers where they're at. One way to also look at this is with our basic numbers and our proficient numbers, once we start moving those basic kids over, which you're going to see here in a second, the good news is that's going to take up about half the chart once you start putting those kids into proficient, which is really exciting. Which is why I want to tee you up here, Ms. Bassstock, for the good news is.
Go ahead, I want to, yeah, say the next part here because it's really important, actually.
Yeah.
In it, um, go ahead, let you finish.
No, go ahead.
So when you look at this, this, the achievement part here is, um, it it is actually important to look at how how the pie is. But the the next two components, which we did very well, is important. Um, I want to back up for a second. Mr. Cable said tier one instruction. I know it, you know, our educators like that lingo. Really what it is, is is the core instruction. It's the instruction that everybody should get. And so this way, even though we have students that are struggling, you don't want what I call a watered down curriculum, they'll never achieve. And if our, one of our core beliefs is, you know, a high expectations leads to high achievement, that's the pieces where we're really, there's a really strong focus on strengthening our core. And that that's a, that's a. Okay.
Want to do that, you agree, that was an agree.
So the the next two components that we did very well on actually sets the foundation for achievement and graduation. And that that's a really important thing because it's it's, you, without these next two parts, which will be gap closing and progress, you, if we don't do well on that, your achievement's not going to move. Right. So that's the piece where, you know, that that will change when you start looking at what, how well we did on the other two parts. Okay?
So let me make sure I understand, I'm sorry.
No.
No, it'll take me a second. So basically.
Took me three weeks, okay.
So basically, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say, Dr. Reed, is of, when we get to the next component after this achievement component, the next two components actually can help drive up this this score right here. As it can, but it also can, okay?
Okay. Yeah, and this is, this is the achievement part is remember, making that grade, hitting that mark. And 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 as Dr. Reed's point, when we were talking about, you know, the factor of COVID and some of us were, you know, you know, online. I mean, if you look at that, it's really, I mean, come on. I mean, our kids, we were struggling with, you know, with online, everybody was struggling with that. And so I think that our teachers and our students did a really, really good job to get where they are.
Yeah, and even relating it to the earlier presentation, when you think about the the absence numbers, yeah. And all the work we're going to be doing proactively to address that, I mean, it's all going to positively positively impact this.
So progress. So we've had this before, we know it, buzzword teachers know it is value added, we all know it is the value added piece. It is now is, this is a hundred percent of progress, the value added is a hundred percent. We used to get those breakdowns and everybody's getting, and right now it's like you're getting a a district value added, you're getting a school value added, and all those components count. So if you click on this, these are the key points here. Reminder, progress measures the academic performance to the expected growth. So the state says you should grow this much, and the progress measures how well did we come to that point? Or did we exceed it, right? This is the OD E math, nobody really knows. They think they do, they present it, but I don't think anybody really knows. It's very confusing. This is interesting, students with disabilities in the lowest twenty percent of achievement will not be calculated. Okay? So that's important. Uh, progress component rate will be determined by two step processes. This is where I debated, because it's like, it's like my math is going crazy. So when they, before, this was it, the growth index, how did we grow? Did we grow, like the state said we should be here, how did we grow? And now we have this effect size that's also important. Okay, you grew them, and how much more did you grow them? What else did you, how else did you meet that measure? So those are two components that are important in the progress. Before it was just this one, and now we have two. All right? There's us. You're going to ask me a question about math.
No.
But you're an ELA teacher, so I'm not nervous.
No, I am too, so trust me, I won't ask you a math question. If you go back to the last, I just didn't understand, uh, effect size, determine if the magnitude of growth, what?
So it's almost impact. It's like, how much did you impact that growth?
If.
Right, like, one is, did you meet it or exceed it? And the one is, how much more did you go? There's a whole chart on there that I will share once I understand it much better.
So determine the magnitude.
Yes, yes.
Without the, okay.
And the next one, and there's where we are. So we have four. So that means that we moved our students to the expected growth and beyond. And that we, and the magnitude, the the, how much we moved them is sufficient. There's like a standard deviation of plus one, plus negative two, plus one, and it goes into that calculation. But basically, we moved our.
During COVID and a pandemic?
COVID, girl, yes.
And going back and forth?
Yeah.
You better take it. That's a huge accomplishment.
Yeah, I mean, I I just, like, this is where Dr. Reed spoke to to that tier one instruction, the push that we had with teachers this year, the work they put into TBTs, I mean, it's it paid off. I mean, they really did. So there's where we are with our progress. This is the big one. This is like, I think this is a a really important one for me and I think a lot of people, because this is the equity piece. This is the gap closing. This is saying that all kids can succeed. This is saying we're pushing everybody to where they need to be, and we're going to get them there. That's what this tells me. This gap closing has a lot of measures. ELA and math, performance, so did we hit the mark? Did we make the achievement? Then there's that growth piece, right? Did we grow them, we just looked at that? Did we grow them? Then there's these other components over here. How did we do with our English and language students? Aha, we just had a presentation on this. Chronic absenteeism, it did not count for this report card, but it will next year. So that part that there, that we're all working on, that's driven by the partnership of teaching students, can I say that right? Is important.
We got all these fans.
I can't keep, I don't even have my own title.
Yeah, I bet it's.
So chronic absenteeism is important, so it doesn't count, you will not see it here, but it will count for next year. And then we have the gifted. Gifted used to be an indicator, and now it's in the gap closing. So what that means is we have so many points to get, right? So each of these indicators or measures are given a point. So if you look at gifted performance, there are three things that make up gifted. Each one of them has a possible points of five. Gifted performance index, it goes back to that same thing. How did we do? Growth, did we grow them? And the identification and services, and that is, are you identifying your gifted students? Is there discrepancy between African American, Hispanic, and how many white? Because it's looking at, are you taking a look at your student population, right? There's the chronic absenteeism, the absenteeism, zero to five.[1768.23] There's the chronic absenteeism, the absenteeism, zero to five. Here's your ELL. You can meet the goal, which will, there's a set goal, or you can improve on it. So that's good, because they give you two ways to meet it. Same thing with, um, I think the same thing with chronic absenteeism, you can move, you can meet it or, or improve. So, if you don't meet your goal, there are other ways to get the chronic absentee, if you shrink it. So that's always, that's always a good thing for us. Right? Then we get here, graduation, ELA achievement, progress, math achievement, progress. Here's where your sub, your, um, student categories come in, your subscale, your subs students, right? All your, your individual, um, your students with special, with disabilities, your English language, your Hispanic, all your categories. Here's what's different about this. Either the group meets it or they don't, there is no, there is nothing in between, it's a zero or one. All right? So if we go to the next slide, here's the key points. You have to have 15 students in that subgroup. Achievement of progress is one subgroup per goal. These are all or nothing, like I said, you can't go halvesies, you can't be close, you can't get a little bit, you gotta hit it. And the, the chronic absenteeism and the ELA, like I said, can be improved, doesn't have to be. You have to improve chronic absence at 3% or absolutely 1%, 0.1 percentage points. All right? There's all calculation for that, as we learn it, we'll get there. This one was one, I don't remember if you guys remember, but in the old report card participation, you'd get dinged as a district or a school if you didn't get everybody to take the test. It would drop you, it would drop your PI, right? Now, it's a little different, it doesn't drop you in your achievement, it does affect your gap closing, but not as severe. There's a little like a 5% um, deal here, so it's not as, as bad. And then this, and this is how it's weighted here, so your participation points are weighted. So it's still important for everybody to take a test, but I know as a building principal, there are just some kids I could, you just couldn't get in, and you just knew you were gonna go down on your PI. It just affects your gap. So here we are. This right here, I, I put this in for you, so the data gods said, we're gonna reset. Here's our goal. We're gonna, here was, oh, here was our goal, we reset, and now here's where we're going forward. So these are your achievement targets. So they did take into consideration something called COVID happened. And we're like, okay, we've gotta do something. So there's, there's your, um, targets. Here's your chronic absenteeism, back to that one. Here is where we should be below at 22% or below. Next year, we have to hit 20% or below, or we can do one of those two things.
And see, you could see where this, the first, um, I should say, discussion this evening is really, um, you know, take that deliberate approach of everybody's role in making sure that our students are present. And, uh, that includes internal stakeholders, external stakeholders. If you're not present, you're not exposed to the core instruction and you fall behind. And so this is, uh, it's more than just taking attendance. It's really, um, working with families and students and getting to root causes of how we can support and, and, and help for, for our students to be present.
That's, that's interesting, so what that makes me feel like is they're almost tasking districts to do more than just teach a kid. Like, I mean, and it, my word for the year, in, in my work life is engagement, it's the engagement for me. Gone are the days to where it's like, I work in education, but I don't like kids.
Yeah, I don't think we do that.
I mean, but, but we know we've been there before. And you now have districts making the engagement piece matter, to where now the accountability is coming into play. So if you have a building that doesn't engage with families and students, it's gonna show evidence, and that things are in place to make it happen.
And, and I think what they said, you know, it's all, it's all, you know, it connects, because if you're not, if you're not giving students high quality instruction and high quality materials, and you're just sending them out to all these other rooms, then guess what happens here? I don't, I don't wanna come to school. Right? So, I mean, that's, it all fits in that big, that big piece.
And you got this piece where, why do you as a student feel this way?
That's right. Yep. All right. There's us. That's awesome.
Not there, but notice the fives.
So that means that we really took to heart, and we really did the work in the classroom to make sure that all students are learning.
Wow.
I mean, that, that's really what that is.
So, so I, and correct me if I'm wrong when I say this, because...
Girl, it's a good feeling.
We're gonna have people that are gonna be like, oh my gosh, they're still horrible school district, even though we got these new measures. But I, is it fair for me to say that it's not like these potential measures were rolled out, and then district, districts can try to meet them before they're rolled out? So I want people to understand, give us our credit. Like, we didn't know what was coming.
I'm not even sure we know right now, when we put it out there like that, that the thing.
But we're gonna have those.
Yeah, you sound like, you know, like, it, it, you're right, because like, in, in, in the old, you know, once you get used to something and you get used to tests, you, you know, you learn the tricks, you learn how, you know, you know how maneuver, and you're like, I know this is coming.
We didn't get a pretest.
Right? And now we're like, oh my gosh, okay. And it was funny, because Dr. Reed, before even the data came out, she goes, okay, we're gonna do a report card presentation. I'm like, I don't know how that's gonna look though, like, what if I say this, and our report card comes up as three? Because I don't get how that's gonna work.
We don't have a study guide.
Yeah, we don't. So we really, like, this, this is amazing, and, and kudos to all the staff and buildings.
I don't know if you can understand everything out there, but it's, it is, I told you, the last two, gap closing and progress. I'll repeat it, because it's, you know, we're, we're living it. These are two key points to the collective work of, of what has taken place in the district, because...
Say that again, say, say it loud.
Say that, say that C-word one more time.
To the collective effort of how we got here, and because if you continue to gap close, we are a diverse school community, and we embrace that. And the fact of the matter, and we're making progress, if we continue the course that we have, you will see the achievement, you know, go up. That's not why we're doing it, just see the achievement, no, it's, what we're doing is, we're making sure that, that all of our students, this was the effort of these, are getting equal access, access to what they need. And some kids might need more than others. And this is really a, a, you know, a key point. Um, and we knew that last year, we had some early release Wednesdays to allow people to do the work. We are working on offering a viable core curriculum that is challenging to our students. Uh, the, this to me is the, the SEL, the social emotional learning piece with regards to the different things that our kids need to be able to be successful. And I think, I, I don't wanna under, you know, it, it, there's a lot more to work to be done, we're not satisfied, but, but if you really know what the last two years have been like, and to be able to have a framework uh, of, of that we, we have here in SEL, you know, it, it's gonna keep having a positive effect. And I think everybody just needs to, to understand what, what the screen means.
And I just want to make the comment, if I may, um, bravo to our teachers who worked so hard during a time when kids were in and out, sometimes on screen, sometimes not, and boy, I, I just appreciate what they did.
I, I will say last year, even like the Wednesdays we talked about and everything, you know, we rolled out a couple things that last year, we talked about, you know, we had rolled out that tier core instruction was important. We said that you have to have high quality materials in front of kids. We said, you know, we gotta change the way we think about, and they, their, the teachers went, okay. I mean, it, I mean, it was unbelievable, I mean, they did. And right now, you know, we selected a core math curriculum, and, and Tim Rosenbaum, he presented, I mean, those teachers did all the work. I mean, they went through all the work. And so I think especially for, when you look at the achievement part, you're gonna see that difference in the achievement for math, because we have a high quality, um, core curriculum. Um, when we said, you know, we even would talk, you know, we're not, we gotta, tier one instruction is important, gotta quit pulling kids out of there, they gotta get to tier one, and then we gotta find support somewhere else during the day to do that. Teachers went, okay, how do we do it? I mean, they really, they really did. So, I mean, this is, this, I mean, we can put the systems in place, but if they don't buy into it, and they don't do the work, it doesn't matter, right? So we did, um, and as you can look to here, remember those three points? So you can see what we got here, our graduation, chronic, again, this one didn't count this year, we'll have a five next year, right? And, um, and then we have right here, so thi- this right here, remember those subgroups I talked about? So we have nine when it comes to achievement, and seven when it comes to, um, progress, because remember, the lowest 20% and the, and the, um...
And Ms. Bassstock explained, not everybody, every school district has the same amount of subgroups. This is a very difficult thing to, but we have quite a few. There might be some school districts that may have two, some that have four. But to have both in mind and be able to hit all those, that is a tremendous effort. Um, and I always tell folks, and I, when I use the word magic, I'm gonna say the magic happens in the classroom. You could have these great plans, but unless it gets down at the classroom level, great, there, that's when you're gonna see the most effective unit of change is there.
And we used to get dinged for certain subgroups, so I, I don't see the ding there anymore.
No dingin'.
Um, so that's, that's, that's good.
So we'll show you, I wanna show you an example on the next page, just, I just took a snapshot of like ELA, just so you can see what this looks like, right, just so you can see the data. So you, you can see we had nine possible points, and we earned seven. And I, I want you to take a look at this, because this is crazy, like, this is the achievement, this is the goal. And so we look at, I'm just gonna black, non-Hispanic, the goal was 54. We just have 71. All right, I mean, let's tell them to celebrate, look at 60, 64 to 71. English learners, 62 to 75. Hispanics, that, that's crazy, that's all, that's not just, we just didn't like hit it like there, like, we closed the gap.
Yeah.
Right? So that's important. So that's what, that, it'll look like you'll have that for math and the ELA, and you'll be able to see that when the full report card comes out.
And that's what's so nice, is like you said, Cassandra, I mean, and it's not like we, in the past, it's not like we weren't hitting these goals for these groups, but we were not getting credit for hitting the goals, because you had hit all nine of the groups to get any credit. And so it's nice that they're now giving you credit for, you know, closing the gap for the groups that you are hitting for, so...
And if I could, you know, one of the work of the advocacy work that we do as a first ring school districts is, we did do things together to the state and wrote what our suggestions were for the state report card. Did they take everything that we offered? No, but, but there were, there were areas, because we felt, especially in first ring school districts, we, I mean, we are, I mean, that's just, we're, we're diverse. Students are global, and it is what it is, I mean, it's kinda like, uh, you know, a baseball player does not go bat a thousand every time they get up there. If you could bat, um, like, this is, if you could bat 300, that's a pretty doggone hitter in baseball, you know? But, um, so this was, there are some positive changes, and you know, um, but, you know, this was one that we felt.
And I guess, and I guess we're gonna continue to remain optimistic, um, for those that are down south passing legislation and never have understood the education aspect of students. We are just going to hope that the politics doesn't come back into play to where too many of our districts are doing better, and so they change the game again.
So they change it, that's what happens though, right?
And that's exactly what we're going to hope.
And I think that's what's important, when you look at this data report, and I know, like, we, we, we celebrate these wins, and we look at our, our twos, and we, but I think what's important about data is what we're doing next. It's not necessarily like, oh, you guys, like you said, oh, this is, it's not about that, it's about, oh my gosh, where didn't we succeed, and why, and what are we doing about it? Because when all these, when you take all that, it's still children in, in this equation, right?
Hopefully they dismantled that greatschools.com link, and they, uh, connected to the new portal for...
Yep, you can, you can click that. All right, so there's two more, we're gonna talk about early literacy, you see that RIMP deduction? We used to get dinged for RIMP, how many kids you have a RIMP that's one?
Oh, good.
So there's three components, however, proficiency in third grade, promotion of fourth, improving K through literacy. So that all goes into this early literacy. Star, I almost said grade, star, it's a star, all right? Quick, quick, quick things, proficiency. They only look at the sub-score at the reading on the third grade, you know, ELA is writing and reading, when they look at that literacy piece, they're only looking at the reading part. Um, and this is important too, because the cut score for that is 50, but to be on a RIMP, it's 46. So people might get confused and say, well, my, why do they, you know, my kid got a 46, how come they didn't, we, how come we didn't make, how come they didn't count? We might say that, well, it, the RIMPs are 46 in a cut score, but to count for proficiency, it has to be a 50.
So does that mean there's no more third grade reading guarantee?
So that's, I'm gonna say, maybe.
We can't get every...
So here's what I'm saying, I like, the RIMP is gone, like, it doesn't ding, however, like, this is kinda the same thing without saying third grade guarantee, because if you look, if you look to promotion to the fourth grade, you still have to put things in place, there's still gonna be guidelines. Because remember, third grade guarantee was all about if you didn't hit a score, you had to fail in third grade. So now they're kinda like tweaking it, saying, okay, if you don't hit, there are other things that you can do to, you know, to go on to fourth grade, so it's, yeah. I'm gonna say, like, the legislation says yes, but I don't, it doesn't really play out. So there we are, we have a, a two for this month, so that we, so there's a caveat, see those little...
There you go, I'm gonna put the asterisks up.
She may be put the asterisks up. Because there are, there's appeals that we can look at, we can look at our data, we can say, hey, all these kids counted, what did they get? EMIS is a huge part of this, so we're looking at that to see all that data.
When you look at, because we use iReady.
We do use iReady.
So what, so this is actually one that we are combing through the data, because there is a margin error with this type of data. And so I think that's the piece we have to October, and so in other words, we have to look to see if somebody met our mark with...
There's a, you, you can use a, a, um, a district approved vendor to say you hit the mark instead of using the OST part.
Yes.
So that's what we're looking, we're, we're gonna come through and look for that, to see if we got all our credit for the, the kids' credit from what they did.
And we, we owe it.
We've done that before though, we've caught errors.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I know we've done that before, and we've caught a few errors, okay?
So there's, this is one that's kinda looking open to some, you know, that's a, we're, we're gonna be looking through it in the next few weeks.
And this, and like, we're, we're not, we're getting there here and here, it's this part right here we're gonna work on, and that's how kids go from K to one, that kid that went K, do one to two, and where they are, two to three. So that's what we're looking at. Graduation's the same, 60, 40. 60% here, 40% there. Number of kids who graduated in the cohort, you started as a freshman, did you graduate?
Sorry, we make you talk so much.
Yeah, that's okay. Same chart, you see the goal. There's the actual goal, here was the goal, here's the actual goal, here's the reset, we should've hit. That's where we need to be in 22 and 23. And there's where we are. See the stars?
This is another one we're looking through as well.
We're checking it out.
Right? And, and if I could, um, as you can tell, it's, I used to do Ray's job for a long time, which we got to, uh, to be in, uh, knowing the state report, and I don't know if anybody can be an expert anymore. Uh, but one of the things we really have to look at graduation rate is when you have school districts, and again, this is an explanation, where, um, it's very transient. And so, you know, you have some other school districts that, that student stays there, and they stay there for 12 years, or they stay there the whole life of, so what's really important is that we may have a student that starts in the cohort, but moves, uh, uh, to another district, or goes to online, or just, and, and unless we close that loop, that person is, um, counts against us. And so it becomes a major tracking, and that's just one example. So I think that's one of the pieces where we're combing through our data to look at where, um, you know, and also have a process with regards in place to, um, you know, when kids are coming in and out, it's not uncommon that by the time they're junior year, you know, somebody has moved two or three times in that piece. Again, not a judgment, but a reality of certain school districts, and which challenges us more than others. Again, not an excuse, we have, we have something in place, but we're, right now, we have till October 28th, we're looking through there, and, um, you know, I'm encouraged that, you know, that could possibly change if we find out we were able to close that loop. Um, and really, COVID has made it even more difficult, uh, because of, yeah, online and just different things like that. So that's, that's where we're at with, um...
And we do, like, we've sat and talked, and like, if you look here, the push is to get this up, because this is 60% of the weight. This is 40%, so the higher this is, right? So we need to make sure we're tracking kids right away, and say where we are, how do we recover that credit? Where do we hit? Are we failing because of credits, are we failing because of EOCs, like, all those questions? And, and that's good data to scour through to see, like, where, where are we? And so we're working on that, so...
It's been nice with, working with Ron Johnson for the summer, and currently, I think he had 142 credits over the summer, got earned, and continued to work with counselors and some different options that we have available.
Can you, Ray, can you, or Linda, can you say that one more time, just in case people didn't hear about, how they define a cohort, because, and how they define, like, who counts towards us for grad, plus, for, as a positive for graduating, and who counts against us as, you know, not graduating?
So once they enter our, it really got off, if you wanna, you guys wanna go over that, Rhonda, because I know you guys track that, but I mean, once they, a cohort is actually, that once they start their freshman year, you know, I mean, they become a part of that cohort. And so what happens is, I don't know if you, we have a, a higher mobility rate, not just SEL, first... And so what happens is, I don't know if you, we have a higher mobility rate, not just SEL, first strings, there's a lot. So, when that student goes to another district, if they don't enroll, right? We have to find them. We have to, you know, and so it's very, do you want to, do you want to speak to that a little bit? Because it's very difficult.
Yeah, I would like to share on the point of what happens with attendance. So, because students have a state identifier number, a unique number, we are not permitted to remove a student off of our roster unless and until they're picked up somewhere else. So, sometimes what happens with attendance is we are working with children and family services. We're working with juvenile justice. We're working with another school district. There's a date and Christine can better tell me the date. There's a date when the, where we're able, Christine, I'm sorry, our EMASS specialist.
In September.
When we're able to go into the system, state system, to be able to determine if an ID number has been picked up by another district, which then will allow us to withdraw the student.
Up until that point, we're not permitted to withdraw the student. And they rest on, they just carry on our roster, which impacts our attendance. So, sometimes a student has not shown up. So, in the work that we started to, the beginning of the school year, is first to clean our roster, to determine who's here, who's not here, making the telephone calls. Again, reaching out to our different partners to determine if we hear of a student. And then if a parent does not, so for example, we might find out that a student has moved out of state. Again, we need a records request. We're pounding the pavement saying, please complete this. We're sending the, so there are a lot of layers and steps because we can't just take them off. We have to be able to, because in an audit, we have to be able to demonstrate the due diligence to find that student, but also match their, that the withdrawal of the student with the withdrawal form. So, you can't just like let them go. So, there's a records request that's going to show that they've moved on or there is going to be a withdrawal form that's going to show that they've moved on. And working through that is quite a task.
For our families, quite honestly, the withdrawal part is crucial for us. And sometimes our families think they have done their due diligence because they've registered into another district. But they didn't close the loop on our end and provide us that withdrawal form so that we can then take them off the books. So, then it becomes a waiting game and us just trying to navigate. And just this week, three calls from three different districts trying to track kids because to see when did they enroll into our district from another district. Because they're trying to get their books, the same things that we're doing, first ring districts. Our neighboring districts are calling because they're also trying to clean up their books in regards to that as well, you know?
You've illustrated.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Once you enter your freshman year, you're that cohort. You don't graduate in four years.
The clock ticks.
You go to five and if you don't graduate in five, then you're considered.
Well, the clock starts to tick the minute that you start that your freshman. The idea too is we also get students, and again, we educate everybody and we do it, you know, well, is we may get a student who has moved twice and they may have five credits. And so that's the face where you talk about, it's on the flip side. Well, it's coming in and not, you know, and then that, their clock is already, it's moving. So, you know, sometimes what happens is that four years is up, but we only had them about a year, a year and a half done well with it. But it still, it still counts against us. So, I think it goes two ways. And that's a common thing in the first ring. The mobility, it is what it is. And I think that's the piece where it's really important to have the framework we do to educate the best we can while they are here. And it does impact our graduation rate.
Thank you. I think it's important for those that are listening to really understand that there's so much more to that graduation rate than what you think it is.
And that interesting part, when you get to the graduation, we would have, remember that report only data? There is a lot of report only data for that graduation rate that will help tell that story. So, it will say, hey, you know, here's some things that happened, you know, in this district or whatever, how many trends. There will be that. So, at least when you see something and you didn't hit it, there's a, there's a piece of data to help tell that story.
That's good.
So, that is there. So, this one is not for this year and we will probably need another board session to go into this.
Just for this one?
Because this is, it's like a lot. But it's a good thing because it does, it does, this one's a good thing because before we were looking at academics and solely, this includes military readiness. This includes, you know, all those other things that our kids do that are still successful. So, they're still working on this. So, as soon as they get that done, we'll do another one.
That's fine. Thank you.
So, the seals are out, but the prepare for success isn't ready.
Well, you know, I can't help you.
You got an asterisk on that?
I can't help you. They have components of it, but it is very, it's very intensive, so. And so this is what our report card dashboard will look like when it comes out, I believe on the 15th or tomorrow.
So, I think on Thursday it'll be, again, I use the word preliminary. Because this is what, which we'll see, we are actually, like I said, looking at the graduation and early literacy because we do have an opportunity to see if there's any changes. So, that's what will come out. But again, for those listening, really looking at the progress component and gap closings, which the district achieved of four to five are really key.
Components in our continued work for school improvement. And just so folks don't know that where it's just all talk, I think the office of academics with Mr. Capel and Ms. Vastak and Tammy Bischko and Ryan Morton, you know, this is, you guys talk about what you got out there.
I thought you were not showing it. I'm like, you started clicking on stuff and I'm like, what are you doing?
So, what we have laid out here is what we did last year going in, what we have going on this year and also a future lens for 23, 24. This was developed probably midway towards the end of last year. As we really sat down and digested everything that we accomplished. I say we, obviously it's, it's not only just our office, it's our teachers, it's our students, it's everybody. And implemented the structure of the TBT process, the new math curriculum that Ray already hit on, the C9 Task Force, which included our teachers, standardized process, just for purchasing curriculum. One thing we found out in our audit of our office over the last year and a half was,
Mr. Treasure.
Going to give Ray a stroke and hopefully Josh was calling me, is we were everywhere. We were purchasing things just to purchase them. And really trying to streamline that process, K-12, does it all fit into the complete puzzle?
Absolutely.
And also looking at going forward for the 22, 23 school year. You can see Ray and Tammy created the literacy framework for the K-6, the benchmarking process that we got started. The K-8 math curriculum's in full implementation and has actually the CID day on 9/21. K-8, that's the focus in the math. 7, 10, ELA curriculum, with the help of Ms. Vine and Mr. Fordy, they were starting to dive through that, the CID day. Aren't all the recovery pathways, those are some different options that we're starting to lay out with Ron Johnson leading the way. Just some different avenues for our kids.
So, I'm going to hit on a couple here. Like today, I will tell you this writing comment, rubrics. We had a lot of, a lot of teachers ask, you know, we need support with writing, we need support with writing. So, we started looking into it. So, today was so, it was awesome. We had the content leaders from K-6 upstairs and we had students take a pre-assessment from K to 10, I lied, three to 10. So, they took this pre-assessment of writing. And so today, the content leaders were sitting upstairs and they were calibrating, looking at writing and saying, okay, and kind of like, what would you give this and giving feedback. And they created this whole presentation they're going to take back to their buildings to help teachers with the writing process. And we're going to do the same thing with 7 through 10 with the Ms. Vine and Ms. Humrock. And we're going to do the same thing. And that's going to make a difference in that achievement for ELA. I think that's what we're going to see the payoff there. And they were, and it's all, and the teachers were just like, they were so excited today upstairs because they were like, finally, we have something that we can like actually look at together as grade levels, not as, and as buildings. Not, not as like, you know, my little cave world or my little ones. Kindergarten and first grade teachers are going to look at third grade writing because they need to see that, right? So, they were all excited about that. And the other thing over here, like he said, the recovery pathway, that four or five year graduation, remember, if you graduate in four or five, we can't wait till they're juniors as seniors to recover credit. That's, that's going to kill us, right? If we keep doing that, we've got to start catching that early. There's got to be parameters around it. We can't just say, you know, hey, we're just going to let you take this test. But we've got to do something because when you're a senior and you say, oh, you had to make up 20 credits, that's, that's almost impossible, right? So, there's a couple of things here for this year that I think I'm excited about that, like you said, if we keep closing that gap and doing that progress, we're going to hit that achievement.
And two things that for the 23, 24 that we're ahead of the game on. First was the transition process from AP to CCP. We're really excited about that. We've been in contact. Joe Nichols is helping us with relationships with Cleveland State and Ashland. We have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks and really pushing the CCP and hopefully, not hopefully, we're going to be scheduling students in the spring for CCP courses.
And when we say CCP, we're talking in rush, not going to Cleveland State, not going, our teachers. In here, so.
So, we're encouraging them to move from AP courses to.
Yep.
And why is that?
There's a couple of reasons why. A lot of colleges are not looking at AP anymore. It is a dying kind of thing. And in order, you could take that class and pass it, but if you don't pass that AP exam, it's, and our data doesn't show that we're passing those AP exams. And the CCP, if we get a solid enough program, our kids can graduate high school with a college associate's degree. And for our families, I think that's huge.
And they won't have to leave the building and leave their cohort of friends.
And plus, we actually have adjunct professors who actually work for our district.
So, like, and if you look, and I will say, and especially when we looked at numbers and Carl was right here, we looked at numbers, you know, and our AP classes are like, it's really tiny. So, we're only addressing like a small paper. CCP can expand those opportunities for kids.
Well, and to that point, I mean, so I had three recent graduates. And the last, my, the two girls, they've taken CCP classes and they refuse to take AP classes even though they've been honored and everything. And they're like, why? They're like, I took a couple of them. They did horrible on them. So, you had to pay for it. They got a one for basically putting their name on the paper and, you know, it didn't benefit it. We're CCP, we didn't have to pay for it. They took the class, they got credits and they were able to advance their skills. So, they're like, why should I take AP classes? I mean, so.
And it's important if our students don't have transportation to get to try C, Cleveland State. A lot of them just can't take it, so why not? And our teachers can do it. And they'll be, like, if we go to Ashland or Cleveland State, they'll train them and they'll work with them.
Yeah.
And why not have our own people?
And they pay for them too, don't they?
So, why not? So, does that help? That answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
And the last one, I'll take no questions on this at this current time, but we are going, we're transitioning our grade book SIS. And I'll have more information on.
That'll be a whole nother.
Oh, we're going to go to Infinite Campus?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Oh, I love Infinite Campus. Oh, thank you.
It does, it does a lot.
All that work I did, you say one thing.
It is, it is a little bit late and we won't go into that, but we will, we'll talk about it. It's time to, first of all, our current system is antiquated. We can do so much more with the other one and it's time and that's, stay tuned.
That's going to be interesting. So, we go to Infinite Campus and I can stop you in progress with emails because I get them every weekend.
So, actually, I think I'd like to give a round of applause to not just the people in the room, but people not here. And that will include our teachers, our tutors, whoever, and, you know, yes, there's work to be done. But I have to tell you what, very proud of our movement and our progress and stay tuned.
I'm with you, Linda. I'm proud of our teaching staff. I mean, we have an exemplary teaching staff here. They know how to do the job. They want to do the job. It is proven by what we push out at graduation. And we have a good group here.
Absolutely, we do.
Good thing, yes ma'am.
Do we get, are those copies, is this copy available for us or not? What we just saw?
The report card.
The whole, yeah.
The report card, sure.
Okay.
Yes, because I'm going to need that when I start having to respond to Nextdoor and Facebook and all of those people.
What we wanted to accomplish this evening is really the terminology, the component areas. We try not to get down the weeds of how they're doing it because we're still, you know, figuring some of the things out as well. So, yes, there could be a copy of that.
It just takes me a lot of progress, every, I mean, process, everything, yeah.
No, actually, that's why we're being transparent today.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it. That concludes my session.
Well, thank you so much Superintendent Reed. Thank you administration team and staff. What I will say, and I have been very, very, very vocal about this, especially this school year, is we are doing some phenomenal things here at Southyville Landhearts. And the way you all work collectively, that's my word. I use it at work like every day. Like the way you all have been working collectively, I would just really, I thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This was actually very refreshing, unlike other school years. I'm going to be truthful. So, thank you all very much. Mr. Capel and Ms. Vastak, thank you. Tell Ms. Bischko we said we appreciate her greatly.
I'm Ms. Bischko.
Ms. Thompson, tell your staff we said thank you. Thoroughly, thoroughly impressed with what I have been seeing out of your office so far this school year. I was actually going to offer a kudos to your YDS team. I got asked a question in regards to other school districts that are having issues with a lot of fights and everything else, even at games and things of that nature. And the question was brought to me by three other school board members last week. What are we doing differently? And I honestly can say every game I've been at, I've seen the youth development specialists. I've seen them with their quote unquote, quote, end quote caseload, which to me is, that speaks volumes because we added something there where a lot of people have not, have not been able to, should I say. So, I appreciate that. Thank you Superintendent Reed and Josh for making sure we had the money to do it. So, we appreciate you. Jack Ryan, thank you so, so much. We appreciate everything you have done. Again, that is my nephew. And he does a great job here in this school district. And Ms. Emmler, it looks like you have found your niche. And I am so looking forward.
I just told her that.
Did you? Yes. I honestly think you have found your, like, I think this is, this is it. And thank you. Because you are the person that families actually can't feel comfortable talking to in regards to this. And I appreciate that interview. So, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, with that being said, I am going to go ahead and conclude this meeting at 7:00 PM on the dot. You all enjoy your evening.